I now call to order the October 17th, 2022, meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:00 PM. Let the minutes show that a quorum is present with all members in attendance. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Ms. Sharp and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and honor the Texas flag to be given by Mr. Mixon.
Father, I thank you so much for this time together. God, I thank you for the ability to do this for people and make this a service for our district and for kids. God, I pray that in all we do, we give kids first. I gotta ask you to watch over our schools, if they stay, if we can keep our children safe. Father, I thank you for all the glory, but we can't tell them what we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, have pledges to be Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, item two on the agenda is recognitions presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have Crippin Elementary. Ms. May, you're gonna go ahead and recognize your folks.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. With me tonight is my amazing Assistant Principal, Jerry Blunt, and we are presenting some great Crippin staff members. So first and foremost is Ms. Brenley Maddox, our student, who is a great student leader. She is kind to everyone. She has a positive outlook on life, which makes her an excellent example and influence on others. Her teachers wrote, she is an exceptional young lady, charismatic, witted, kind, willing to help her peers and teachers. She's eager to overcome any challenge, always optimistic, and has an attitude of gratitude, which is one of our seven mindsets. She is a member of our National Elementary Honor Society, a fifth grader that's been in dual languages at Crippin since pre-K, and takes an initiative of how things should be ran. She came into the first meeting and said, this is how we should act, and this is what we should do. And both of her parents are both teachers at Porter High School. So congratulations, Brenley. Okay, next up is Ms. Sally Ganeam. She is our teacher. Without our fabulous teachers, students wouldn't be possible. Truly a very creative soul, a go-getter, willing to start out of the box projects and ideas, and is a Crippin favorite. For example, we did the DOT Day Project this year, and she went above and beyond. You should come by our school anytime and come and see it. You're just immersed into creativity with students. She's instrumental in starting our house system, as well as, fun fact, she made the videos for Tavola and New Caney Elementary, and we allow her to cheat on us just a little bit, but that's okay, because she's so amazing. And really has motivated all of our stakeholders, our parents, our students. And she is wonderful at enriching the arts. So former classroom teacher, and so when you go in her room, it's not just a regular art classroom, like her vocabulary, the things the students are saying, truly just helps the rigor at our school. She's a team leader, serves on the MTSS team, and understands SEL. So thank you, Sally. Love you very much. Next up is our amazing paraprofessional, Ms. Alex Woolsey. Man, this lady has some drive and tenacity. She works full-time, being a mom, a volunteer at New Caney ISD, and she is almost done with her degree, which nominated her to get the New Caney ISD scholarship, and she's a recipient of. She's almost done. I'm gonna hire her as an amazing teacher. She moved into a new role this year of Tech Apps Aides, and it's an elective that our students take, and our students enjoy it. She's a go-getter, and she sees a problem, like, hey, we need a bigger playground, and literally, like, mapped it out in such a design that no one could say no. And just truly here for all kids, and is a great baker to boot. So yay. She gives us cupcakes when we're sad, so thank you. I had also my head custodian, Sandra Maleski, but she's not here tonight, but I have our amazing child nutrition manager, Kendy Tatum. She's been there, I think, as long as I've worked at Crippin, and she's just always just rolls with the punches, very calm, a problem solver. If a student hasn't been enrolled or signed up for something that needs food, she's willing to just find a solution. Donated to our school through her church this year, even helps the kids count, how many items do you have on your plate? So we're all teachers at Crippin, and I just thank all of you so much. So that's it. I present to you, Crippin Elementary.
Great job. Great job. Great job, ma'am. Thank you so much. Good job. Appreciate you. Thank you. Great job. Thank you. Great, ma'am. Great. All right, next on our list is Mr. Powell from Kiefer Crossing Middle School.
All right, guys, good afternoon. Okay, so Kiefer people, yeah, good job. It's good to go second. All right, so we're gonna go in a little bit different order. So, yeah, y'all are good. Perfect. Come on up. So thank you, guys, again, for giving me the chance to publicly express gratitude to some of the awesome people that make Kiefer Crossing special. First up, I want to recognize Kara Manwaring. Kara's our teacher representative today. Kara is an example of Kodiak pride in all that she does. Kara started at KCMS three years ago and has quickly assumed different leadership roles. She has gone from one of our in-class support special education teachers to now the Paces teacher. Kara is able to handle the students at KCMS with some of the most challenging behaviors, always with a smile on her face. Kara's a hard worker and has helped refine several of our processes to make art meetings, data collection, and parent communication more efficient. She may only have three years of official experience, but you would never be able to tell that. It's like, sometimes I just go to her, I'm like, hey, how would you handle this problem? And she has wisdom beyond her years. I can always count on her to shoot me straight, too. Her continual dedication in leadership helped her to become our Special Education Department Chair this year, and she was the KCMS Teacher of the Year for 2021-2022. Kara is also the number-one person I want on my side if we need to break up a fight or chase after a student. Kara's firm, Kara's tough, Kara means business, but Kara is always kind. Kara is a proud mom of two KCMS eighth graders, and she loves to hit home runs for her softball team in her free time. Kara, we appreciate you. All right, Jessica, Jessica's next. Next, I would like to recognize Jessica Gonzalez. This is Jessica's fifth year in New Caney ISD. All five of her years have been at KCMS. Jessica started as an in-class support aide, and she now serves as a leader on our campus as our registrar. This is her first year in that new role, and being a registrar at a secondary campus in a fast-growing district is hard. Some days, she's juggling five, six new students; some days, she's juggling 20 new students. I think that's probably our record, first couple of days of school. I mean, it was a packed house, and she always handles those students just with exceptional kindness. She showed me her dedication immediately. Whenever she interviewed for the job, she said, just want you to know, I do have a family trip planned that first week, and I know it's new and returning student registration. I said, no problem. I said, I want you in the spot, we'll figure it out that week, but you're my choice. And she came back and she said, hey, look, I'm gonna reschedule that family trip, I'll be there for registration, I know you guys need me. And she shows me that dedication in everything that she does. She has excellent customer service and always greets her parents with a smile and helps them feel welcome to KCMS. The registrar position is critical, because she is often the first person a new family will interact with. Time and time again, parents tell me that Jessica makes them feel welcome and gives them a great first impression of New Caney ISD. Jessica, we truly appreciate you. All right, next up is our custodian representative, Afilia Merga. Afilia has worked in New Caney ISD for one and a half years. Afilia cleans the administrative areas, and she is a pleasure to work with. She greets me each afternoon with a smile and asks me how my day is going. Afilia is pleasant with all of the people that she works with, and she goes above and beyond to make sure that the front office area is neat and clean. Even on the days when we are extremely shorthanded, she still takes time to stop and speak with me and ask me about my day. She's an important part of KCMS, and I truly, truly, truly appreciate you. Stacy couldn't be here tonight. She's our child nutrition employee. Stacy's our cafeteria manager, and she is incredible. I selected her two years in a row because she deserves it. She just goes out of her way to manage our cafeteria. This last week, I struggled to cook lunch for three kids, my own three kids. She cooks 1,200 lunches every day without missing a beat. Staff shortages, food shortages, it doesn't matter. She handles it, and she always comes up with a plan, and, you know, we couldn't do school without lunch, we couldn't do school without Stacy Ortiz, so I appreciate her. She is sick, and so she was not able to be here tonight. All right, I saved our awesome students for last. Okay, first up is our student athlete, Josiah Listenby. When I asked our boys coordinator for a student athlete that exemplified what it means to be a Kodiak, without pause or hesitation, he recommended Josiah Listenby. Josiah has been a leader since he first stepped foot on the KCMS campus. Josiah is kind to his peers, and he is a consistent example to those around him. He listens to his teachers, and is respectful in classes, and other students follow suit. He listens to his coaches and puts forth max effort, and others follow his lead. He respects his teachers by giving max effort on assignments, and his grades reflect this dedication. Josiah also plays competitive baseball outside of school and is active at his church. He is an active member of our Fellowship of Christian Athletes at KCMS as well. We're proud to have you representing KCMS, Josiah. All right, our CTE student representative is Mason Cochran. Mason raises goats, sheep, and next year, he is excited to raise a steer. Mason recently got 18th out of 46 goats at the Dallas Fair. He placed 14th at the New Caney Fair. The highest any of Mason's livestock has ever scored was reserve grand champion in the New Caney Fair last year? Is that right? Okay, project show last year. Still counts, dude. Mason also competes on the bass fishing team through New Caney High School and New Caney ISD. In addition to raising animals and fishing, Mason also competes in livestock judging through New Caney FFA. Mason has great grades and only misses school for aggravated reasons. Mason's teachers report that he is a pleasure to have in class, and he is an example of what it means to be mindful of your actions and your attitude. He also is a big fan of Top Gun. We had to dress up my first year at KCMS, and they told me it was like a big deal. They were like, Halloween, kids dressed up, you gotta dress up. I was like, that's not real. They were like, no, you have to dress up. And so, of course, I dressed up as Maverick, and I thought I'd be the only one. This is prior to the movie that came out this last year, but Mason rolls up, and he's Maverick also, so he has great, great taste. We appreciate you, Mason. All right, our fine arts student representative is Charlie Kel. Charlie plays cello in our orchestra. She's an active two-year member of Chamber Orchestra. Our orchestra won sweepstakes last year, which means that they received the top marks in their UAL competition. Charlie made the honor orchestra during the 2021-2022 school year as well. This means that Charlie was one of the top eight cellists in our region. Charlie makes aways in her classes and is an excellent student. Charlie is also a cheerleader, plays volleyball, and plays soccer. Charlie is a model student and can also discuss office trivia, probably better than any other student in New Caney ISD. It's pretty impressive. Charlie is mature beyond her years and has always been a leader and an example to other students of the appropriate way to behave in school. I appreciate Charlie's maturity and her determination. Thank you for being you, Charlie.
All right, great job. Item three on the agenda is public hearing for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas First, presented by Ms. Chalit.
Okay, this is the Financial Integrity Rating System Public Hearing for the 21-22 school year, but it is based off of 2021 data that's from the PIM submissions, some other data that TEA collects, as well as our annual audit report. New Caney ISD received an A, which is Superior Achievement, for the 21-22 first rating. The rating system measures the quality of school district's financial management and reporting system. The information provided by Schools First System guides the district in the continued efforts to maximize each taxpayer's dollar. This has been 20 years that we've had the first rating, and we've received Superior Achievement all 20 years. There's different criteria that go into this. There's critical indicators, which is indicators one, two, three, four, and five. Any no response to those indicators is an automatic F-rating, substandard. The five criteria resolve around unrestricted net assets, the annual audit report, auditor findings, debt payments, and payments to other governmental agencies, and currently, criteria number five is not being scored at this time. Indicator number six is the average change in fund balance over three years. It can't be less than 25%. New Caney did receive a ceiling pass for that indicator. Indicator number seven measures how long and days after the end of the school year can New Caney operate. We received the maximum 10 points for that. Indicator number eight is whether the school district has sufficient short-term assets to cover short-term liabilities. We received all 10 points there as well. Indicator number nine measures whether the district's general fund revenues exceeded expenditures. We received 10 points in that area as well. Indicator number 11 is whether the school district's assets are greater than the long-term liabilities in order to support long-term solvency, and we scored 10 points in that area as well. Indicator 12 is about the debt burden of the district. We received six points on that indicator. Indicator number 13 measures the administrative cost ratio. All points were received in that area. Indicator 14 asked the school districts, if you just decrease the number of staff proportionate to the decline in students. We haven't declined in students, so that indicator was passed with 10 points as well. Indicator number 15 is not being measured at this time. Indicator number 16 measures the quality of the data that's reported through PIMS. You can't have more than a 3% discrepancy in the data. We received the ceiling pass for that. Indicator 17 addresses the annual audit and says the district received a clean audit with no material weaknesses and internal controls. The ceiling was passed in that criteria. Indicator 18 also surrounds the annual audit in regards to federal funds, and it says we had a clean audit, that the district had no material weaknesses and internal controls over federal funds, so we received 10 points in that area. Indicator number 19 says whether or not the district has posted all of their required things to be posted on the district website. Five points was the maximum allowed there, and we received all five points. And then indicator number 20 is whether or not the board members discussed the district's property values at a board meeting within 120 days of the district's adopted budget, and we received the ceiling passed on there. A copy of the first rating is also available, if you wanted to read a little bit further. And then there is some required disclosures that are required to be discussed at the first rating public hearing. The first one is the superintendent's contract. It is available on the district's website, so you can find it there. The second disclosure is reimbursements received by or paid on behalf of the superintendent and the board members. This is for the 2021 fiscal year, so we have previous Superintendent Franklin on there for $4,123. Superintendent Calvert, 2,0886. Mixon, 1,0597. Harrell, 1,0690.
Thank you. Just hoping someone else will break the ice for me on the open forum, but as the incoming county commissioner, I just wanted to come in and state what you already know. I'm socially conservative, I'm fiscally conservative, and I want to let you know how proud I am to be a New Caney Eagle for life, and how proud I am of you guys and the conservative board that you are, and all the good that you're doing. All of you. And I know it's a thankless job, and the faculty, the staff, and even the students, and everyone involved. I'd like to give a special shout-out to the personnel, the board members on the Tasby Board. I know that's a, they may not share the same values as a lot of us, so thank you for your courage in stepping up and representing us. And the representation that we have, you know, if you look at it statewide, we stand out, but you narrow down to a region, even the challenges that we're facing in some school districts, just in this county. So, and that's where my comments come from. Like I said, not only am I a former student and incoming elected official, I'm also a parent of three students in the district, two at Sorters Mill and one at Porter High School, and another, next year, I'll have three in Sorters Mill, so we've got our hands full, but I just want to commend you guys and thank you. And I know you guys got your hands full. When I get in January, I'm looking forward to working with you guys and partnering on many projects. I think we can make a tremendous difference in the community and impact the kids, make it safer just right here in the vicinity of where we sit. We've got a lot of impact we could make. So thank you for allowing me to get up and speak. I look forward to serving y'all, and I want to thank y'all for serving all of us, and it goes a lot of time without saying what a great job you are doing, and thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it. Item five on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and Government Code 551.076 for the deliberation regarding security devices or security aids. Any action as a result of this closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. The time is 6:25. The board ended closed session at 7:11, and will now reconvene in open session. Item six on the agenda is reports and proposals by board members.
We had a, sorry, we had a meeting of the instructional committee, and we met to discuss curriculum audit enhancements, and then we had some accountability updates. I thoroughly enjoyed this meeting. It's just great to listen to the teachers and administrators talk about what we're doing in the district, and how it's very heartening to listen to what we're doing in the district and know that we are known as a district of excellence, and that is just fantastic to hear. Dr. Luttrell shared results of the ELA curriculum audit completed this summer. The audit confirmed that our curriculum is 100% aligned with the TEES and confirmed our direction moving forward. Instructional specialists shared the layers of support provided to our curriculum documents to help teachers when planning effective lessons. Suggested activities, books, labs, content, language supports were shown, and principals shared ways these supports help with planning and instructions on their campus. This was fantastic. So they had a computer, and they showed us this, I don't know, site that they had built that had all of these programs and all of these things that the teachers can plug into the classroom, and it just kind of, it streamlines the process. I've watched my husband lesson plan and my sister and mom and dad lesson plan for years, and they're up all night doing all kinds of things, but this is there for our teachers just to click on and use. It's phenomenal. I was so impressed with the work that went in. Accountability updates. Ms. Good shared information about STAR 2.0. All status assessments will be online with very few exceptions, beginning in 2023. This is another area where I was so proud of New Caney and our forward thinking. Our kids are already online, 100%. There is a lot of districts in our area that are not, and these kids have to do all of their STAR testing next year online, and these kids don't all have computers. It's crazy. So these time limits have been eliminated, which is incredible, and up to 75% of questions may be multiple choice. The rest will be a combination of short, constructed responses on cross-curricular information or new item types. Ms. Good also shared examples of the new item types that are interactive. Impressive. I commend our instructional teams. It's phenomenal, the work that they're doing. It's very impressive.
Also have a, we had a meeting of Construction Facility Planning Committee on September 27th. Three items that we worked through was West Fork High School concerning the punch lists. Gamma has given us a completion date of November 30th to have all items completed. They continue to be building systems, training, and completing between the contractor and our folks at West Fork. Phase two is, conversations are being had on that and continued with New Caney ISD, StanTech, and Duratech. We also had an update on Porter Elementary replacement, Purcell, which we approved last month through the bid process. They're also having meetings, and they have begun to have the engineering and other parties as pre-construction phases continue to go through. And then we had a future bond update. New Caney ISD was considering a change in the secondary schedule for 2023 and 2024 school year, which would have meant construction, the construction of New Caney High School baseball and softball fields here off of our Eagle Drive property. Since this change is not occurring next year, the project will be put on hold for the foreseeable future, but will remain a top priority in the district as we come up into the new bond program. Also, it was the first time that Ray Bias is our Director of Construction was there, and he did a wonderful job.
One thing I have to read, each year prior to the November election, the board president is re- Each year prior to the November election, the board president is required to announce whether each board member has met the required continuing education training requirements. And as of today, all board members have met and exceeded the training requirements. Item seven on the agenda is Superintendent Report, presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. I'd like to recognize Mr. Papas at this time to tell us about all these wonderfully decorated pumpkins.
Yay!
Good evening, board. Thank you for letting me come up here. I have a really fun job. I just want to say thank you for letting me have my job. It's a blast. We're allowed to be very creative with what we do. One of the things we've been asked to do is connect with the schools, obviously, but also connect with the community. This was a great opportunity for us. We were, we asked every school to decorate a pumpkin. They were given a pumpkin, they were required to use their given pumpkin, but they could add more, and they were just asked to decorate it. They don't have to carve it, they could paint it, they could do whatever they want. The pumpkins, though, were donated by HEB. So, HEB jumped in and donated 20 pumpkins, which was great, and then we have two winners. The two winning schools will get Tiff's Treats for their entire staff, which is awesome. And then the superintendent said they can also wear jeans for the rest of the semester, so that's even, oh, I don't know what's more exciting, Tiff's Treats or wearing jeans. But, yeah, we'll see. It's a big debate. But I do have the winners. I want to go quickly just through everything real quick. We have Porter High School was Beetlejuice over there. Next was West Fork High School with the Ghostbuster. Woodridge Forest Middle School had the Nightmare Before Christmas. Then Cocoa was Wyd Oak Middle School. New Caney was the Birds. The Green Frankenstein was Kiefer Crossing, and then Pine Valley Middle School was Frankenweenie. I thought that was great. Adams Family was Sorters Mill Elementary School. Oakley Elementary was, oh my gosh, Audrey Two from Little Shop of Horrors. Porter Elementary was the Big Hocus Pocus. State Pub was Kings Manor Elementary School. Inside the Coffin, that was Dogwood Elementary School, and that was supposed to be another Nightmare Before Christmas. The Great Charlie Brown Pumpkin was done by Valley Ranch Elementary School. The Other Cocoa was done by Brookwood Forest Elementary School. In the back is Ben's Branch, and she's, she's from Hocus Pocus as well. And the front one was Tabola Elementary School. Frankenbride was, oh my gosh, which elementary school was that? Oh, New Caney Elementary School, and then the last one, of course, is Crippen Elementary School. So, our winners in first place for Elementary was Oakley Elementary School won first place, and they are Seymour or Audrey Two. Second place was Crippen, and then Kings Manor State Pub was third place. And then, I'm going to start in third place just to keep the tension going. Woodridge Forest Middle School, which is the Nightmare Before Christmas, got third place. Pine Valley Middle School, which was Frankenweenie, got second place, and first place was Mr. Kandarko with Porter Elementary School's Beetlejuice. I do appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody that participated, all the schools. I threw this on them kind of last minute. It was, they had about a week until they went on break, and so, but they all jumped on it and did an amazing job. So, I just want to say thank you to all the schools that participated as well.
Good job.
That's awesome.
All right, next up, Ms. Schillert, finance update for us.
In the spring, y'all adopted a compensation plan that allowed for a one-time $2,000 payment for all employees to be paid in two payments, $1,000 in November and $1,000 in May. Also in that compensation plan was to pay returning employees an additional one-time stipend, also paid out November and May. We ended the year really well. We talked about that during our budget workshops. Some things kind of played out for us with the ESER money coming in, and then our growth was so astronomical last year, but our attendance rate was down a little bit, but with the state holding us, hold harmless, we did really well in the year. So, we're here tonight to let you know that we've come with a $2,000 additional one-time pay for returning employees, so they will get $4,000 this year, $2,000 in November 20th and $2,000 May 20th. So, we'll bring a budget amendment to you next board meeting for you to approve. Also in the audit, you'll see a signed fund balance, because we will be taking some of the money that we put in fund balance this year to pay for the, well, the 2022 fiscal year-end to pay for this one-time pay, and then some of it will come out of ESER. So, questions?
Great. Great job.
Why we weren't able to depend on that money from our budget to do the raises, why we couldn't have done that.
Okay, so, when the state held us harmless two years ago, they gave us ESER money. So, basically, they said, here are some federal dollars that you can have, that's one time. So, if we, if we put that in a raise, I mean, now you have to depend on money coming in every time to pay for that. They did not tell us they were holding us harmless this past year until like the second six weeks of the second semester. So, all of these are one-time influxes of money where if you give a raise, that's 3% or 4%, now you're having to pay 3% or 4% every single year on dollars that we're only receiving one time. So, you don't want to strap yourself by giving a raise when you don't, when that money's not going to come in every single time. So, on years that we just, basically, we have ADA growth, and we have property value growth and things like that, and you can afford to do that because that's going to come in next year, then you do that. But if not, one-time pays are a good way to award your employees and not be strapped with money that's not.
I thought it was such a great decision to get forward.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Great job.
All right, thanks.
All right, hard to follow that up. Wanted to give a safety update real quick. First, as y'all know, the state mandated that people outside of our district come do intruder audits of our facilities, and we had our first two visits in Porter High School and Kiefer Crossing past the flying colors. There was no findings on those audits, so no, Caesar and his team did a great job, and Powell was there earlier. So, to come in and audit two of our largest facilities, and both those guys passed, that's a testament to them and their diligence. So, I just wanted to put that out there. And then, second, I'm proud to say as of today, minus a few little trainings, we officially have an officer on every single campus in the district. Chief and his command staff over there have done a great job of screening those applicants, getting the right people in our buildings to be around our kids and protect our kids. So, again, just a couple of trainings to go, but as of today, we officially have an officer on every single one of our campuses in the district. Continuing with the, with the safety theme, y'all know me, I'm all about equipping our people with every possible tool in the toolbox, so that way we can show up to school, be safe at school, and we can all get back home at the end of the day. And so, Uvalde definitely caused us all to take a step back and make sure we are doing everything possible and using every tool in the toolbox. And one of those tools that we are not using, but in the next couple of board meetings, I'm going to be bringing y'all some recommendations to allow us to use this program. We have been looking into making New Caney ISD a guardian program district in the state of Texas. To my knowledge, we are the only district in Montgomery County that would have this program, and we would definitely be the largest district in the state to have this program. So, I just wanted to give you all a timeline of how this came to be. It wasn't like I just woke up today and decided to make this a superintendent's report. And then some steps that it's going to take our people to be considered to be a guardian in our district, and then what it looks like in New Caney ISD. So, I'm going to read a little bit, so forgive me on this one. So, initially, this conversation was, we started this back in June, immediately after Uvalde. Like I said, you have an event like that, you just start thinking, are we doing everything we possibly can? So, we researched the Marshall and Guardian programs over the summer, and we determined that the Guardian program would be the best fit for our district. We formed an internal committee to discuss this, the potential of becoming a reality in our district. So, on that committee was myself, our board president, Mr. Trout, Chief Wooton. We had three principals, one from each grade level. Mr. Kandarko represented our high schools. Mr. Carr represented our middle schools, and Ms. Kelly represented our elementary schools. So, we had those conversations. We presented them with information. You know, this is something we wanted to look into. All three of the principals and everybody on that committee was unanimous, yes, let's keep moving forward. So, Chief and I did some investigation on training providers, just what that looked like again, checked all the boxes, so we continued to move forward. That internal committee met again on September 12th, and we decided to move ahead with the recommendation to the Board of Trustees this fall, so that way our, the Guardian program could potentially become a reality in our district no later than the start of the 2324 school year. So, it's my plan at this time to bring recommendations to you guys so that we can put policies in place no later than December 22, so that way we can get training, application process started and everything in the spring. Our employees will hold an informational session early in 2023, assuming you guys approve it, so that way they can learn what it is to be a guardian in our district. So, some steps to be considered to be a guardian in New Caney ISD. The first one is a non-negotiable. You have to have a valid Texas license to carry. Without that, can't get to step two. Step two is you have to be scored as proficient during a qualifying shooting exam on the range. Have to do step one, pass step one, you pass step two. Then you must clear a district-approved background check, have to pass a district-approved psych exam. They have to be a good employee and good standing with the district, and then we're going to leave it at our discretion, mine, you guys, and Chief Wooton. Any other relevant criteria we feel is important in order to be a guardian in our district. So, what does this look like in New Caney ISD? This program is strictly voluntary. Let me say that again. It is voluntary. We're not going to go around and force people to carry a weapon on our campus. This is strictly voluntary. This is a defensive program. Guardians act defensively to protect students and other staff, and we've determined in that committee guardians will have their concealed weapon on them at all times, and guardians will have to requalify on the range every year and practice multiple times a year. So, again, this, these are recommendations that I'll be bringing to you guys in the next couple of meetings. Again, it is, I feel like it's my responsibility to do everything we can to make sure our students and our staff get back home to their parents and their families safely, and this is just another tool in the toolbox that if our staff so chooses to take advantage of it, they can in those efforts to potentially, if that day ever comes, get back home to their families at the end of that day. So, just wanted to give y'all an update on that, kind of where it came from, the steps to be considered, and what it looks like in the district. More details as we can share them will come forward, but at this time it'll, we aren't doing it officially until y'all vote on it, and I'll be bringing those recommendations in the coming months for y'all to do that.
And I just want to say one more time, so everybody understands, this is 100% voluntary, correct?
Yes, sir.
Item eight on the agenda is a consent calendar consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of finance reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, and consideration of instruction reports. Is there a motion? There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passed. Item nine on the agenda is Consideration to Award Agreement with BLK Architects for Architectural Design, Architectural Services to Design, Construct New Caney High School Facility and Procurement Method, presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. As Mr. Turner alluded to earlier, as part of our potential bond program in the spring, we identified the land we just recently purchased on Eagle Drive to relocate the New Caney High School baseball and softball fields over there from where they currently are, as well as construct a new CTE center, and we've been having conversations with BLK Architects. I appreciate Todd being here, and got some really great ideas going on to get that program going when the time is right, assuming a successful bond referendum happens whenever you guys call it. So, just asking you to award the Architectural Design Services to BLK, so that way we can hit the ground running when it's time to.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve awarding agreement to BLK Architects for Architectural Services to Design, Construct New Caney High School Facility and Procurement Method? Motion been moved as second. There being no further discussion, vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion is approved. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:30 PM.